Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, July 17th, 2017. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It's 7:30-ish, and I'd ask that you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Spencer, please call the roll.
Palmsky.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mullenar.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn, absent, leader.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent, we have a quorum. Onto the third item on our agenda. I'm going to ask Chief Freeman to meet me right here in the middle, and also Dick Doofert. And family.
The whole room.
Take the whole family, everybody you've got. Come on, everybody, let's go. This is your family.
Come on. Come on, if your name's Doofert or you're related, come on up.
Friends, we have the whole thing up there.
Firefox. Firefox. Shortcuts.
All right, so if you could have guessed, always an exciting event here in Elmhurst in the National City Council. We'd like the opportunity to recognize certainly folks who are part of the city. And here, we're here tonight to... Dick Doofert's being promoted to Battalion Chief. Very exciting. After 24 hard years of work on behalf of the residents of Elmhurst, we thank you for that. Round of applause, please. This only happens once, hopefully. So I'm going to ask you to introduce everybody you've got up here. If I can get on the spot, or if you get it all.
This is Jill Stan. Dan Walters. Sarah Walters. Jake Walters. My daughter Kelly. My nephew John. My nephew Danny. My dad Dick. My mom Chris. My brother Chris. My son Rick. My brother-in-law John. My niece Maura. My wife Linda. My sister Denise.
Happy Chief Mary.
Okay, wonderful. Well, please raise your right hand and see that for me. I'm Richard Doofert.
I'm Richard Doofert.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
I uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Elmhurst.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Elmhurst.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Fire Battalion Chief according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right, want to get a picture? Can we scooch in and see how many people we can fit in a picture? All right, round of applause.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Watch your step, Chief. Makes me nervous. Congratulations, watch your step.
Watch your step.
You got it, Norm.
Watch your step.
Thank you very much.
All right, Bill Solka, come on up. And family, the whole family, we got you, baby.
Big family feud.
Anybody hides, anybody hides. That's some lurkers back there. Okay, we're promoting Bill Solka tonight to Fire Lieutenant. And Bill's been with us for 15 years? Fifteen years. Bill, who do we got here tonight?
Got my son Henry, my daughter Shawna Carson, my wife Mary, my in-laws Rob and Robyn Rose, my parents, Daddy Mike, my brother Dan, my buddy Vlad, my aunt and uncle, Aunt Jean, Uncle Mike, Aunt Catherine, Uncle Kurt, Uncle Ken. My cousins over there, Tommy and Chris.
Fantastic. All right, please raise your right hand and see that for me.
I'm William Solka.
I'm William Solka.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Elmhurst.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Elmhurst.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties
I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the Office of Fire Lieutenant
the Office of Fire Lieutenant
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's good for five minutes.
All right, if you've got a picture, we need a picture. Kids are dangerous. All right, another round of applause.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats, thank you for the service.
Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you.
I'm not a practitioner. I can say all right.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Sir, I say lieutenant, I mean you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
A tiny cake.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Watch your step.
Watch your step. Got first.
I know, but we want...
I could say.
It's going to be more than welcome to stay. There is cake downstairs with both of them named on along with some refreshments. So you're more involved than that down there. Thank you, everybody.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. We'll hear.
See now, that's why I brought this jacket because...
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations, sir. It's exciting. You did hold on. I was just going to say, you might have...
He could have done the Gerald Ford Chevy Chase thing down there.
I don't know that I'd hold on to him like that.
But you did hold on to him. Yeah, that's what I want to be known for.
Oh, boy.
Okay, Patty, you ready?
Honestly, it wasn't...
No, it was small.
I'm just going to get a seat.
I never really have to think of it in the back, like a wedding.
Are we done?
Or optimistic. Okay, that concludes Agenda Item 3. Onto Agenda Item 4. Recused of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit? If so, please raise your hand if you have any written communication. Yes, sir. Is that rich? Yeah, we have a public forum just after this. Oh, we've got to have that open. Sorry. Yeah, I know, as long as it's not an open meeting. I know, we roll with it.
Tom's going to kind of monitor.
Yeah, Tom's going to monitor, he's going to keep it cracked. Okay, written communications.
None.
None, onto the public forum. Public forum, this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. When you're recognized, we ask that you make your way over to the microphone on my right, your left, the one next to Chief Ruth there. We asked out of respect for the amount of work we have to get done here this evening, and out of respect for other folks who may want to speak, that you keep your comments to three minutes. We will keep time, and if you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up your comments. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor, I'll start with Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. Having read the paper, I understand there's a new project on Butterfield. Zoning's going to be changed. Can anybody in this council tell me why you went to all the trouble of putting a new zoning into the newspaper and have public comment on it? When you'll just change it at your will. Interesting, isn't it? I understand that city, the city may own some of that property down there that that apartment complex is going on. Treasurers' report was printed in the paper. Last year, the city sold a lot of city property which really belongs to me. But you didn't make any money on it. Interesting, isn't it? What'd you do with it? Give it away? On the business end in the paper, got the businesses coming back to the city council. Need money to expand, to modernize. Could the council remind these people that there are banks in the city of Elmhurst? They do hand out loans if you're qualified. But every one of them comes down to the city and says, "Jeez, I need money from the city. That's me. If I want to do something around the house, put in new windows or whatever, I've got to go to the bank." Just point out to banks to these gentlemen, will you? They'll give them a loan. Last but not least, we're buying some more general obligation bonds. Supposedly for water meters. We've already bought general obligation bonds for water meters. The one thing I ask finance to do since we keep on adding to this general obligation bonds, before they just say it's $9 million worth of general obligation bonds, I wish they totally would just make an announcement with this $9 million of general obligation bonds, the city now has to pay off $140 million worth of general obligation bonds. We keep on adding to this thing and adding to it, and it doesn't seem to be an end to And since I pay for these general obligation bonds, you're putting in a new street on Industrial Drive. Who's making up the difference in what you got from the state and to finish that job there? Don't tell me it's the residents paying for it again, because when they get a sidewalk in or they get a street in, they're assessed for it.
Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
And just to end this, that Jaguar dealer needs about $2.5 million that you promised them six. Where's the $2.5 million coming from?
Barbara Lonergan, 261 West Fremont.
Barbara Lonergan, 261 West Fremont. Tonight, I am speaking in favor of that evaluation of a resolution against the Fly Quiet Program and runway rotation. On June 1st, my nine-year-old and I were witness to an airplane that flew over our Berens Park neighborhood at 1,600 feet, about the height of Willis Tower, with its right engine on fire after a bird strike. It was by far the scariest thing we've ever seen. After the initial shock wore off, I thought back to the public meeting held here in City Hall in 2015 where Paul Kitkey, FAA Operations Manager, stated that the east-west runways make the airport and air traffic safer and more efficient, and that should reduce both traffic and noise over Elmhurst. In the time since that meeting, Chicago Aviation Commissioner Ginger Evans has stated repeatedly that the modernization plan increases safety and efficiency and addresses the impact of airport noise by balancing O'Hare Airfield operations. We have been told time and time again that runway 4R22L will be used less and less, and that the east-west runways are the safest and most efficient. Elmhurst has suffered through air traffic and noise for decades with no relief, but now that other communities are impacted, they suddenly want to share the noise. Safety and efficiency should be the priority for O'Hare, not which communities complain the loudest or how many of them can band together with this common goal. And maybe that's exactly what the Chicago Department of Aviation wants, for communities to be pitted against each other, which then takes the heat off them and leaves us to fight amongst ourselves. While I realize this is an uphill battle, I'm hoping tonight's proposed resolution unites our community and helps us focus on the priorities that were identified in the 2015 meeting, safety and efficiency, which ultimately would lead to less traffic and noise over Elmhurst. Thank you for your consideration.
No one else has signed in, Mr. Mayor?
No one else? Okay, that's it for folks who signed in. Is there anybody this evening who did not have an opportunity to sign in that wishes to address council at this time? Please raise your hand so I can... All right, we're going to go from my left to right. So we're going to start with the young man with the glasses and the jacket on, and the gentleman behind you in the striped shirt after that. As I've stated, we're recording. I ask that you provide your name, address is optional.
Good evening, my name's Ben Silver. I'm with Citizen Advocacy Center at 182 North York Street. For those of you that don't know, Citizen Advocacy Center is a nonpartisan, nonprofit community legal organization dedicated to building democracy. We do that by promoting transparency, access, accountability, and participation in government in Illinois, especially at the local level. A big part of that is our civic education effort, and with that in mind, we have a lot of interns every summer and throughout the school year, and we would like to invite everyone to our annual Intern Night, next Wednesday, July 26th, at 7:00 PM. It's a great opportunity to hear about the work our interns are doing this summer and learn a little bit more about the organization. We're trying to have it at our office, we're undergoing some renovations, so we might have to move down the street to one of the wonderful restaurants. If you need any more information, you can find me after the meeting or check out our website. Thank you.
Okay, man in back, get his hand up. Yes, sir.
My name is Ken Blau, B-L-A-U-W, 267 West Butterfield Road, Elmhurst. Two things. I'm against the new addition, or the townhouses, that you are considering tonight on Butterfield Road. First of all, I don't know if you ever have gone out there in the morning and in the afternoon when the traffic is. Traffic is stopped from Prospect all the way to Spring Road. And now you want to add 58 townhomes with all them cars coming in, and I don't believe that any of you have taken the time to go there in the rush hour and see that, okay? Second thing, when it rains, when, years ago, when Elmhurst put new water pipe under the sidewalks, we all had new sidewalks. Ever since then, when it rains, my neighbor to the left, myself, and the two neighbors to the right, we get two to three inches of water on our sidewalk, and it stays there for a day. Over the years, I've had Tony Kazone come out, he said, "We've got to put some drains in and the grass," okay? That's the last I heard of it. I called Mr. Mullenar about four weeks ago. He said, "Give me two weeks, I'll call you back." I still haven't heard. Please.
Okay, show of hands, who's left who still wishes to address the council? Anyone left on this side? Both gentlemen here, or just...
We'd like to defer to this gentleman.
Okay, the gentleman in the red shirt with his hand up.
I'd like to defer to them.
Someone's got to make a decision. All right, anybody else wants... Yes, sir, you.
Hello, my name is David McCurdy, and I also live along Butterfield Road. Actually, I live next door to Ken Blau, so I also know what he's talking about when it comes to the sidewalk problem. I can verify it. But that's not the main thing I want to speak about this evening. I also want to comment on the townhome construction project that would happen across the street from where I live. I believe that some on the city council have said that the construction of the townhomes will be very good for the city, and I'm sure that that's likely in some respects. But I would also like us not to forget that any gains from a project like this will also come with some losses that may be less tangible. I share some of my neighbor's concerns about specific effects of this, but I want to talk about something a little different. Because I live across the street, I've had opportunities to experience what I think will be lost when this construction is approved. Construction on this site will mean the destruction of the modest woods that occupy it now. The woods are not spectacular, but they're unusual in our city to have a block, you know, three lots that are woody as these are. And these woods host tall black locust trees that are lovely to look at by day or night. And not only that, but the spectacle of a full moon silhouetting the black locust trees and everything else back there with a few clouds in the sky is a lovely sight when you see that moon rising from where I live. I imagine that when the townhomes are built, most of that will go away because of the light that will be shed in the night sky from the new construction. The modest woods is also the home, or at least a refuge, to some deer, some foxes, and to some other wildlife. Nothing spectacular again, but nevertheless, something unusual, I would say, in our city. And also, I've heard frogs and owls across the street at times over the years, and every summer, there are the sounds of some eerily noisy insect that I never have been able to identify. Those things will go away once the construction takes place, and this is just a sampling. So the gains from approving this project may outweigh the losses. I'm not fully competent to judge all of that, but it seems to me that the losses at least deserve to be noted, and that's what I'm trying to do. Thank you.
Okay, last chance for this side of the room. Anybody wish to address themselves? Address the council. I'm going to go with this side first. Sir, it's a public forum, it's just a comment. I'm going to ask you to go ahead and take the microphone.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Anthony Lacata. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Taft in downtown Chicago. We're representing the applicant in this matter. It's a little difficult to speak to you under these circumstances because I anticipate that Mr. Bernier is going to make several statements. He has previously furnished you with a letter concerning two items, both of which are incorrect. I could go into that detail, or we could take that up later if you prefer. I believe the only thing we're up on tonight is a opportunity to refer this matter to council for preparation of an ordinance, so your action tonight is not a final action on the application. The public hearing on this matter before the Plan Commission is closed, and also, this matter's been heard by your zoning committee as well and recommended by them. So if you want, I would be happy to let him speak, and then if you have any questions, answer those questions for you, or we can wait and come back when the ordinance, depending on your action tonight, we can wait and come back. I'm at your service to answer your questions or respond if you have any after hearing what Mr. Bernier has to say.
No, this is just public forum. It's a one-way communication, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, anyone else on this side? Okay, please raise your hand if you would like to address the council and have not had an opportunity to do so. Anyone else? All right, the man in the red shirt, please.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is David Bernier, and I am the owner of the property to the west of the proposed development. As this development is a significant deviation from the Elmhurst 2009 comprehensive plan, I invoked Section 22.25H2 to ensure the full accountability of the council in addressing this important decision. Make no small plans, they have no magic to stir men's blood. These are the words of the visionary city planner, Daniel Burnham. In 1909, Burnham co-authored the study of Chicago's comprehensive, coordinated vision to create a more beautiful and prosperous city. 100 years later, in 2009, Elmhurst crafted their own comprehensive plan. That plan envisions beautiful office buildings, creating spaces for people to work right in their own community. The applicant provides nothing in the public record detailing how their plan is more beneficial to the Elmhurst community than the comprehensive plan. Simply, the applicant requests townhomes be placed where the plan prescribes offices. Elmhurst staff report, April 20th, 2017, quote, "The future land use map in the 2009 comprehensive plan identifies the property as general office," period, unquote. The applicant's amendment application dated March 8th, 2017, states, quote, "The comprehensive plan calls for that area to be used and developed for general office," unquote. The application only describes how R4 zoning would be beneficial to the public interest over the current R1 zoning. Nowhere in the application does the applicant address the benefits of R4 zoning compared with the far superior benefits to the community of office zoning prescribed in the plan. The applicant continues by attacking the validity of the plan, inferring that since the hospital campus was not yet complete in 2009, that the findings were invalid and that the current use reflects a greater need for residential communities. They simply reach a summary conclusion that residential uses are in greater demand, more so than offices. The demand claim is laughable, as no townhomes have yet been built on any of the land identifying the plan where they should be built. Additionally, demand... Additionally, demand is so weak that the applicant himself is forced to request a variance from current zoning to proceed as the project is not financially viable. Office development would not require any variance. Finally, as the owner of the adjacent property for 20 years, I have personally seen much better proposals prepared for this area. The reason that they had not been engaged before was because the previous owner of the property that they're buying was never interested. Even if their demand equation was true, it is not germane, because what is in demand is not synonymous with what is beneficial to a community. In Burnham's day, the private demand for lake access was enormous and far exceeded the public demand. However, the planners astutely realized how the benefits of the public access to the lakefront would greatly improve not only the city, but the entire metropolitan area. The rewards of keeping with this vision and doing what was beneficial for a community are still being enjoyed by millions of Chicagoans today. Indisputably, office zoning yields far greater benefits to the community than additional R4 zoning in this area. In my letter submitted to the council on July 10th, 2017, which is included in the public record, I elaborated on the numerous benefits of an office zoning vis-a-vis R4 townhome development, including a coordinated and comprehensive balance of uses as prescribed in the city's plan, preventing an over-saturation of multifamily residences, vastly superior tax benefits, particularly to the schools, library, and park systems, safer traffic dynamics with less road congestion congestion, and diminished noise pollution in the evenings and on the weekends. Ironically, fulfilling the, the demand for multifamily is not beneficial to the community and actually exacerbates one of Elmhurst's striking vulnerabilities. As the community is known for its outstanding schools, families in District 205 are contributing to a disproportionate growth in school expenses and taxes per household. Now, as the taxes have become increasingly burdensome, demand is growing for people to leave their homes, creating demand for developments such as what AMCO is suggesting.
Sir, you're over your three minutes. I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay, thank you. As this proposal is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, as this proposal is suboptimal, as this proposal results in piecemeal zoning, and that this proposal is financially marginal, I requested the council votes no on this plan. Conversely, a yes vote would permanently squander an opportunity for the city of Elmhurst to realize the full benefits of the 2009 comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who did not have an opportunity to speak, who wishes to address council at this time? Okay, seeing none, that wraps up public.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Bram.
I was sent an email and asked if I can read it during the public forum section, if that is appropriate on behalf of a resident. Otherwise, I will read it later down on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate. We typically don't do that. If you want to do it under other business, I guess we can consider it, but not during this time. In fact, I guess you could distribute it to council at a later date, but I'm not in favor of opening up this can of worms, of having residents send, send us in correspondence and having us read them. They have an opportunity to do so themselves.
I believe it has been done in the past in my tenure.
Not in my tenure, so.
It's your, your, your call on that, but I'm just pointing out that it has been done in the past. I do know it's out of the ordinary, and that's why I made the, the question before proceeding.
Okay, I'm going to suggest you forward that to council.
I thought to mention it under other business.
Yeah, I'm asking you not to do that. All right, on to announcements. Any announcements? Any announcements from the dais? No? Alderman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. Friday, this coming Friday, July 21st, is the 5th Annual Elmhurst Cycling Classic. We're all set to go. Racing begins at 11:00 AM and goes until 10:00 PM. We race rain or shine. The only way we don't race is if there's dangerous lightning in the area or other dangerous weather circumstances. So we're excited about the day of racing. Our committees worked very hard to put together a great show this year. We've added a few elements, including hand cycling. We are still in need of volunteers to help us do the event. You can go to our website at elmbike.com and click on Volunteers, and you'll be able to fill out a waiver and help us put on a great show for the city of Elmhurst. We thank the city, we thank the college, the Park District, and all the, and all our valued sponsors, who without their support, we couldn't do this event, and hope everybody enjoys it.
Very good. Any other announcements from the dais? Alderman Bram.
Yes, I just wanted to make mention for this upcoming Thursday, a meeting, and I was actually bringing it up as I was speaking, here, I believe, at Elmhurst City Sol, Elmhurst City Hall, from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock, about providing input about the improvements for the 290 slash 88 interchange at 294. Just a brief summary, the proposal is, is stating that they want to expand to six lanes in each direction, and there's other aspects to the proposal, but the public meeting will be this Thursday at City Hall from 4:00 to 6:00.
Okay, any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda, any alderman wishes to have polled to provide comment or vote no? Alderman Brennan?
My hand's not raised. Oh, I thought you said Bram. I'd have had it, Mr. Mayor, I'd have had it.
7.28, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, what? 7?
7.28.
7.28. Anyone else? Any item, any item at all? Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 7.20, please.
7.20. Okay, any other item on consent agenda that anybody wishes to have polled? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item 7.2 and 7.28. 7.20, boy, I'm having trouble getting back in the swing of things here, I think it's the holiday. All right, let's start that again. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item 7.20 and 7.28. Motion to approve consent agenda, minus those two. Alderman Bram, seconded by Alderman Deuter. Clerk Spencer.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Leader. Leader?
Leader.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Sorry, say that again, please.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries, I appreciate that. Onto agenda, item 2.0. 7.20, sorry. Give me a second. Okay, this is a report out of Public Works. Put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to, oh, Clerk Spencer, can you read the recommendation?
Sure. It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the following contracts be approved not to exceed listed amounts in addition to contingency funds in the amount of $200,000. Siemens Industries, $4,244,594. Neptune Meters, $2,336,978. Master Meters, $2,086,000, no, no, I, thank you, everyone, I see my mistake. And Water Smart, $32,250. And the city attorney be authorized to draft a resolution approving the five contracts, signed by Marty Deuter, Vice Chairman, Michael J. Bram, Norman Leader, and unsigned by Jim Kennedy, Chairman.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, seconded by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While the report was unsigned by me, I am in support of this. I was not in attendance at the second meeting, the most recent Public Works meeting, but I was present at the first one. So with that, I'd like to defer to Vice Chairman Alderman Deuter, who has some prepared comments on this.
Alderman Deuter, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Alderman Kennedy. This report recommends the approval of a major infrastructure improvement project that has a number of benefits and one major goal, which is to reduce the amount of unaccounted-for water within the city's water system. Our current level of unaccounted-for water is around 18%, and the maximum limit set by the state is 10% to be reached by 2019. One major contributor to unaccounted-for water is our water meters, which are owned by the city. More than 60% of the meters were installed more than 25 years ago, and recent testing indicates that our meters fail to account for 25, I'm sorry, for 5% of the water that passes through them. Another major contributor of unaccounted-for water is leaks in our delivery system. Many leaks go undetected for long periods of time until they eventually surface. This project has been anticipated over the past four years, and I'd like to acknowledge the eight city staff members who did the heavy lifting to evaluate all the possible components and recommend the project before us. The team was made up of John Jagiello, Chris Johnson, Chris Dufort, Dan Rosenwinkel, Paul Burris, Julian McDonough, Mike Stenson, and Howard Killian. More details on the project and its benefits are included in the report. Even more details are included in the 13-page draft report and the 70 pages of supporting documents that were presented to our committee last week. I appreciate the review team's diligence and thorough review, and our committee asks for your support.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the vote.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Leader.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda item 7.20 is approved. Onto agenda item 7.28. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you, it's a report out of a DP&amp;Z, and I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city council approve the applicant's request for a map amendment from R1 to R4, a variation from the amount of dwelling units allowed per acre from 54 to 58 as a minimum lot area of 2,711.24 square feet from 2,900 square feet per dwelling unit, and a preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate the lots. The attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval, signed by Michael Honquist, Chairman, Noel Toledo, Vice Chairman, and Mark Mulliner.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Honquist, seconded by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Honquist, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start, given some recent developments, I wanted to allow city attorneys to Reno to make some comments.
Yeah, there's some legal machinations going on, and I think it's appropriate for a city attorney to fill in council and the audience as it relates to this report.
Certainly. This past week, an objection, what we call perimeter objection, was filed on this project by an adjoining property owner who spoke tonight. And that objection triggers the issue of whether or not a supermajority will be required to pass any ordinance on, on the subject property. So another letter was written by an attorney who represents the developer, indicating that they don't believe that that section is applicable. That triggers the two-thirds majority. We have looked at that. At this stage, our opinion, while we're still going to continue our research, it is a complicated issue, is that it does trigger the supermajority, and it would require two-thirds of the corporate authorities, which would in fact be 10. So I just wanted to let the council know that was our opinion, and.
So it doesn't apply to report approval?
No, it does not.
But it would apply to an ordinance?
Yes, it would.
Questions as it relates to this legal issue? Alderman Bram, you look like you have a question.
Yeah, if, if, if the attorney could maybe expound a little bit more on why this would be applicable in a supermajority case. My understanding was, for the most part, and I'm generalizing here, but for the most part, it's financial issues, right? Financial transactions, which would be a supermajority case. In this case, that is not applicable here. So why would this be a supermajority?
Our code provides specifically for a supermajority in a perimeter zoning case when a text amendment is involved.
Okay.
Okay. So the, the letter triggers the supermajority, but it's not applicable until we get to an ordinance.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Back to committee to discuss the report itself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as was read, this is a map amendment from R1 to R4 for the development of some townhomes along Butterfield Road on the south. It's basically a foresty area right now. Committee reviewed and agreed that it does fit within our 2009 comprehensive plan, which briefly states that some single-family residents exist along Prospect Avenue, and that this entire area should be transitioned to multifamily residential that is higher than three stories in order to complement the density and intensity of use of the new Elmhurst Center for Health Campus. That's in SubArea 9, York Field Area, Section B, for anyone that wants to review it. So after we reviewed the applicant's request, we looked at stormwater, which actually improves under this development. Parking met all of our requirements, as well as traffic. So we ask for your support in supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Okay. 还有什么 questions? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. Just in regards to the before-mentioned stormwater, the drainage of this property, it does mention in the report about the developers proposing detention vaults on the site to accommodate stormwater. It sounded, in, I guess my novice opinion, as, as weak language. Is that a guarantee, or is that something that they're contemplating? Or does this report and then subsequent ordinance mandating some type of stormwater management on this property if this development moves forward?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if my committee members do.
Alderman Mulliner?
Because of our stormwater ordinance, they're required to meet the storm order, stormwater ordinance that we currently have, they are proposing exceeding that. They've offered, and I believe that they've put it in writing that they will exceed it. They have to meet at a minimum, and that's what, they've exceeded it in their plans.
Alderman Bram?
Do we know what the acre foot is that they need to meet, and then what are they proposing to exceed? I know it's a little bit into the minutia here, but do, does anybody on the committee or staff know those details?
That's why we have Kent. He's not here.
Any other comments? Alderman Brennan?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. A number of residents of the 7th Ward have reached out to me, expressing concerns with the traffic flow that would result from this project on Butterfield and/or Swain Avenue. Therefore, I'm just simply requesting a separate vote on this agenda item. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer?
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Leader.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, and one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay, motion carries. 7.28 is approved. Sorry about that. Onto committee reports. Agenda item 8, 8.1, we have a report out of DP&amp;Z. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city -- that the City Council approve the additional sales tax incentive for iSports for an amount, iMotorsports, for an amount not to exceed $500,000 or 12 years, with $100,000 as an upfront incentive to assist with expanding the showroom renovated parts, service upgrades, the needed technical assistance and training, and the hiring of additional employees. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval. Signed by Michael Hanquist, Chairman, Noel Toledo, Vice Chairman, and Mark A. Mulliner.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we're reviewing tonight is actually a new agreement that iMotorsports has come forward with because they're looking to expand their business. The original agreement, for recollection for the council, goes back to basically an empty lot that iMotorsports came in several years ago and asked for assistance, which we granted at that time. And they have built what is now a very successful business. I think it's one of the top probably incentive deals that we've done as a city. They're up to $12 million right now, and they will pay off that original assistance, sales tax assistance, early. As business continues to grow, they have been approached by Polaris, which owns the Indian Motorcycle brand, and have asked to, have asked them if they would like to open a dealership on this property. And therefore, they came forward to, someone's a supporter, came forward to ask assistance with a separate plan that is specific to the Indian dealership. And for those of you that are not familiar with Indian, it's a high-end motorcycle brand. Polaris is the owner. They have a couple of others. Actually, they've got a sling and a couple of different types of motorized vehicles that they're selling today that were used as a trial. And then they are, they're looking to add this dealership. So the structure of the deal is, as stated here, is a loan of $100,000 upfront, which I'd like to point out is personally guaranteed by the owners. And that $100,000 would be paid back first before any sort of sales tax split. At that time, once $100,000 recuperated, has been recouped, excuse me, we have a sales tax incentive up to $500,000 that would be paid for over 12 years. So with that, we'll have a new dealer. I think the overall was $1 million investment to build out this new dealership, bring in the products, and then they'll also bring in obviously service, hire new staff, and expand the current business that they have. The two agreements are also remaining separate. The one will be paid off, which is the original incentive plan. And then this would start in that new plan that's tied to the Indian dealership. And then just real quick, a couple of questions we asked. One I had in particular is how many other Indian dealerships are out there? Where are they located? You know, what is the success rate for these dealerships? And there are two other areas, one in Rosemont that I remember specifically, that has a used Indian, I believe it's a used Indian dealership.
Correct?
Mokina. And they would like to bring the dealership to Rosemont. Based on the success of this business, they're getting first crack at making this happen. But what we did find out, there is a very regionalized, I think it was 25 miles or 25-plus miles between franchises. So they do protect the franchise, number one. Number two, which I didn't know but found out, is that for those of us that have lived here long enough, people in Chicago like to summer, which is a verb. And both convertibles and motorcycles, I think it was the largest, correct me?
Largest.
Largest consumer, I guess, of convertibles and motorcycles in the country is here in Chicago. So this is a very vibrant market and a very good business that's looking to expand in Elmhurst. I think this is one of the better, and I would even say easier decisions for us to invest with them in growing their business here in Elmhurst. And we're unanimous in our approval to support this. So I ask for your support tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Comments or questions? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start out and say that I appreciate and want to thank the committee for the very creative TIP incentive, or sales tax incentive deal that is proposed under the report tonight. I like that everything was taken under consideration of the previous deal about four years ago now and how to stagger in this deal. I'm not against this deal in its entirety, but I do have some concerns. One of which, some of the components of these concerns, how it relates to the City of Elmhurst's sales tax incentive policy. According to our own policy, there's two criteria that must be met in order to even consider a sales tax incentive. Number one being the desirable business that would address an underserved business segment. I could argue that this would be considered an underserved segment, albeit we have motorcycle dealerships around us. As Alderman Hanquist already mentioned, this segment of motorcycle dealership is nowhere near the City of Elmhurst. The other option, again, there's only three, and it needs to move forward with at least two. Presence of extraordinary development redevelopment costs, such as, but not limited to, remodeling, et cetera. I'm not going to go down the laundry list. I don't see it meeting that criteria. Yes, it is remodeling. Yes, it's expanding by, I want to say it was a couple thousand square feet, and renovating a couple thousand square feet, ballparking it here. But I didn't see anything mentioned in any of the meeting minutes in committee or prior about anything that makes these costs extraordinary. I spoke with the president earlier today, and even from that conversation, I really didn't pull anything that it met that criteria. The last is just, number three, quality of development and overall aesthetics that are in excess of the mandated legal requirements and design standards. That I couldn't even make an argument for. So even if we were to, even if we were to say that two out of the three were met, and I truly don't believe that's the case, it does seem like there is unanimous, or there is, I shouldn't say there does seem, there is unanimous support from the committee. I have concerns with some of the other criteria in the recommendation. The first concern I have is in regards to the duration or the time period. According to our City of Elmhurst policy, Section 3, Item Number 3, sales tax rebates will be predetermined for a fixed period of time not to exceed 10 years. Once again, we're going over the 10-year mark, and we're going against our own policy. I've stated this in previous discussions over previous sales tax incentives as well, so it's nothing new for me. But I have concern that we're going against our own policy. This is what the policy states. This is what we decided should be the policy for sales tax incentives. But once again, we're going over what we clearly declare in the sales tax incentive policy. The other piece of that line item also states, and will include, annual and total cap amounts. This recommendation does not include any annual cap amounts. It does over the duration, so there's a total cap amount of 500,000, but there is no annual cap amount. Again, going against our policy. That same bullet item also states that the agreement provisions will be based upon a percentage of sales tax produced, i.e. 50/50 split city developer. And I know that's just an example. But in previous years, we would sway in behalf of the City of Elmhurst taxpayers, and it would be more 60% or 75% to start to the City of Elmhurst taxpayers, and then eventually graduate to a 50/50 split, or even 60/40 in pro of the developer. In this case, we're starting from ground zero, or it's proposed to start from ground zero at 50/50 moving throughout the deal of, again, 12 years, which exceeds our own policy. Again, kudos to the committee of making sure that we do have clawback in this recommendation. The one concern I do have that I noticed this afternoon that we don't have in this recommendation is a clawback if the Indian brand gets terminated in its entirety. It does say if it moves. It does say, I don't know what I did with my copy. It does mention something else, but it doesn't make mention of if they terminate the brand in its entirety. And that's definitely a concern. So those are some of my issues in regards to how it relates to the policy and what's being asked. In regards to the dollar amount, the total improvement is $1 million. What's being asked and what's being recommended tonight is half. So the taxpayers of Elmhurst to finance half of the development. You know, what is the magic number here? I've spoken to a couple aldermen about this previous to tonight. I don't know what the magic number is, and I've said that in the past. Who really knows what the magic number is? But 50% of the total investment by the developer is substantial to me and too big of a pill to swallow. I already mentioned the 50/50 split. I already mentioned in regards to, there isn't a clause for the termination of the sales service of the Indian brand at this location. So at this time, before I go any further, I have various amendments I would like to propose. And the first one would be, I would like to make a motion to amend to change the duration or time period of the incentive from 12 years to 10 years in accordance with the City of Elmhurst's sales tax incentive policy.
Hold on one second.
I brought it here, Mayor.
Well, you have the actual written amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, great. Let me see that. Alderman Bram, this is yours.
Yes, sir.
All right. Which one am I looking at? The green one?
Yeah, I color-coded it to make it as easy as all possible. So any of the changes in green is what I would deem would be related to the amendment.
Make a motion to amend. To change the duration or time period of tax. How is that? Well, I'll tell you what. Let's see if there's a second to the motion, and then we'll take it from there. Appreciate it, having it in writing. Alderman Bram. Okay, we have a motion on the floor before us to change the duration slash time period of the incentive from 12 years to 10 years in accordance with the City's Elmhurst's sales tax incentive policy. Do I have a second? Alderman Levin?
As chairman, I'm going to throw out something, and maybe I'll ask staff here, who maybe is more familiar with this, or Chairman Hanquist. How does that impact the rest of the schedule? I mean, can you just shift it from 12 to 10 years? Do you have to? If it's a 12-year schedule, isn't it the total incentive divided by 12? Do we now have to divide the incentive by 10? It's an accordion, isn't it? It doesn't just automatically?
Mr. Mayor, so it is capped, but the nuance here is that the first $100,000 was supposed to be paid back.
In the first two years?
Yeah, and then spread out. So it...
So the first... So basically, I'm paraphrasing. I'm just trying to get the conversation on the same level here, so we're all... So the first two years is a payback, if you will, for the $100,000 loan, if you want to call it, whatever it is. The first $100,000 that we're fronting, they're not going to share in any of the sales tax revenue?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Well, I'm going to ask you one question, Alderman Bram. Is that, knowing that that incentive is actually only 10 years long, is your motion, do you still want to move forward with your motion? It's delayed by two years, and then it starts.
Well, it's not delayed. They're getting money upfront of $100,000, so it's not delayed.
Okay. All right. Back to my underlying question. If, let me guess for clarification then, Alderman Bram. In this, in your, with your proposal in effect, would the first two years still be zero sharing, $100,000, and then eight years of a payback?
Correct.
Is that... Yeah?
Eight years of a split.
Eight years of a split. And then in that split, do you take, what's the total amount? $500,000?
Too complicated.
$500,000? Yeah, right? Assuming the total incentive amount... All right, I'm going to let the council figure this out. Motion stands as is. We have a motion before to change the duration slash time period of the incentive from 12 to 10 years. Alderman Bram, you want to follow up?
Yeah, I was just going to try to clarify a little bit.
Please.
You know, my perspective on changing it, I mean, one, we're matching what we state as our policy. Is it more aggressive from iMotorsports team? Of course, right? It shortens the duration on reaching their cap. As the current incentive that they're currently four years into, they seem to believe, according to their projections, that they're going to exceed that and meet the maximum of $250,000 before the duration, and I don't remember the duration of that one. I feel that we as a city should always challenge the petitioner or the developer, or in this case, iMotorsports, you know, to be as aggressive as possible to meet their maximum. We shouldn't, as a city, and you know, my responsibility for the taxpayers is not guarantee the money, but make it challenging enough that they can reach it, but not totally out of their reach. And I think that this doesn't inhibit them, especially if they perform as their pro forma has showed, as well as how they performed in regards to the establishment of their initial business without the Indian brand.
Okay. Any other comments on the motion? Alderman Toledo?
Thank you. I would just suggest that, yes, while it would shorten the duration and make it a more aggressive time for payback, it also would shorten the amount of time that the business encourages to stay in town and continue to pay sales tax to our town. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Levin?
I just, I wanted to ask the committee, is this, is this policy the 10-year, 12-year, something that was talked about in committee? Or is this the applicant's proposal that was adopted by 12?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Hanquist?
Staff worked with the business owner to come up with this schedule, and we reviewed it, agreed it was reasonable.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Bram?
Just to touch basis on Alderman Toledo's statements. According to my understanding of what I would deem to be the clawback, which is the second-to-last paragraph in the recommendation report, I don't even see mention of a duration here of what the clawback would be. My natural assumption would be it would be the duration, but it doesn't make mention of 10, 12, 20, 30 years. It does, the three, the two bullet items that are mentioned is iMotorsports would require 100% payback of the amount of incentive paid to iMotorsports up to that point. A fundamental breach would be iMotorsports inability to complete the required renovation by June 30th of 2018 or the designation of the location other than the dealership property at the point of sale for Indian motorcycles, used motorcycles, et cetera. So it doesn't even, it's not clear to me on what the duration would be, but I would concur with Alderman Toledo's concern. It would, I would believe that it would be either 10- or 12-year commitment depending on what the duration of the incentive would be. I would request that that would be specific, obviously, in the ordinance, and maybe we come to a consensus here tonight or make an amendment to this report to clarify that. But I just wanted to clarify that I don't see that being specifically stated in the recommendation before us tonight.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask Clerk Spencer to call for a vote on the motion to amend, to change the duration slash time period of the incentive from 12 to 10 years in accordance with the City of Elmhurst's sales tax incentive policy. Clerk Spencer?
Palmski.
No.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
No.
York.
No.
Levin.
No.
Park.
No.
Hanquist. Kennedy.
Nope.
Mulliner.
No.
Brennan.
No.
Sabatino.
No.
Deuter.
No.
Dunn, absent. Leader.
No.
Okay, one aye, 12 nays, one absent.
One aye, 12 nays, motion carry. Motion fails. I apologize. Onto the motion before us, which is approval of the report. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Bram?
Yeah, I'll just walk through the motions that I have listed here. the incentive for the build-out. 50%, $500,000. I want to make sure, if there's any press in the room or residents out there, I'm not against this development. It's just too large. $500,000. I think any business would love to move here. If we're promising our developments, our businesses, half of their build-out costs would be funded by the City of Elmhurst taxpayers. Again, I already said it in my initial comments, I don't know what the magic number is, but I know it's not $500,000. We're already doing $100,000 upfront, which I don't know if we've, from my recollection at least, I don't think we've ever done an initial of one-fifth of the incentive upfront. I applaud the creativity. I want Indian to be here. I want Indian to be at iMotorsports. But $500,000, or 50% of the total build-out, is unacceptable in my perspective. So I'd like to make a motion to amend to change the total sales tax incentive from $500,000 to $350,000.
Okay. A motion to amend to change the, basically, change the incentive maximum from $500,000 to $350,000.
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion before us. Do I have a second on the motion? Motion fails, lacking a second. Any other comments on the motion and report before us? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the past, in committee as well as here in the dais, people have stated about the policy, and we should follow policy. I have not seen that yet tonight. We are not following the policies that we've put in place. We have long discussions about our policy to make sure that everybody who comes up on this dais has an understanding on what is really acceptable when it comes to major issues like this. Major issues. $500,000 is significant in my mind. We're not talking about $10,000 here, $20,000 here. I am serious when I state that I do applaud the creativity of this agreement. It's too rich. It's against our policy. I don't understand on how we can be going against our own policy. To me, at least, and nobody here tonight has voiced on how it even meets the policy to begin with, the three criteria that is stated that we should be following, but past that, it says about annual caps, we don't have it. It says about if they terminate the brand itself, we don't have it in this recommendation. It makes mention of examples of 50-50 percentages at most, and in the past, history has shown that we typically go the other direction, being 60-40. I'm just going to skip my third motion, because I don't see it getting support, but I do think we shouldn't move forward without moving forward with this fourth motion. And I already stated it, and that is in regards to adding in regards to what is called the fundamental breach, I guess, requirements of the agreement, to stipulate that the termination of the sale or service of the Indian brand at this location be a part of it. Because the way this is stated today, that they can terminate the brand for whatever reason, not move it, but terminate the brand at this location for any reason, and they get to keep the dollars for the development. So I'd like to make a motion to amend to add an additional fundamental breach requirement, which states, as I quote, "the termination of the sales slash service of the Indian branch at this location." And that's an or of the previous list.
Mr. Mayor?
One second. Alderman Bram? Is, there's reference of a clawback, but are you just asking for a further clarification of the clawback? Because I don't know where you would insert this motion, this wording into this report.
It was given to the clerk in regards to where it would be inserted. It would be inserted under the second-to-last paragraph that starts with similar to the current agreement, and it should be highlighted in yellow, being the termination of the sales slash service of the Indian brand at this location.
Termination of the...
One second. Uh-huh. All right. Or, I see your or now. Okay, so on the second page, the second set of bullet points, where it's iMotorsports, then the designation of a location. So this would be a third bullet point added.
That'd be correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Your reference of a clawback, I'm not sure on how it's defined. My understanding was it was these, originally, these two bullet points.
I understand. I just, I wanted clarification on where the motion went. I got it. So we have a motion to insert into the report after the second bullet point that reads dealership property, or, new bullet point, the termination of the sales slash service of the Indian brand at this location. Motion before us on the floor. Do I have a second? Alderman Deuter. We have a motion before us to add to the report, in essence, a third bullet point that states or, then the bullet point, the termination of the sales slash service of the Indian brand at this location. Discussion. Alderman Deuter.
I have a couple of questions. One, the sales tax incentive agreement doesn't apply just to sales of Indian, it's all the sales at this location. Is that right?
No.
Alderman Hanquist? Is this incremental to the entire location, or is it just...
According to my notes, this is specific to Indian and the Indian brand. That's... Am I correct? I had clarification before the minutes.
All right. Give me one second. You guys want to ask staff on this?
Sure.
Yes, we should.
I'll entertain a motion to allow Assistant City Manager to address counsel. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Hanquist. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Assistant City Manager, cop. There seems to be some question as to how this incentive relates to what they sell. Can you enlighten us?
Now, the incentive's for all sales. There's a, for the first 10 years, there is a base that they will get paid if they do over a certain amount that goes to the first agreement. But once that first agreement ends, once they collect their $250,000 over 10 years, then it's 50-50 of all sales, including parts, used bikes, Indian, whatever it may be.
Clarify for everybody? Alderman Palmski?
As a follow-up, their obligations don't change if the brands change. Is that correct?
You're asking staff, or...
Whoever can answer.
I'm hoping anybody who has the answer. Alderman Toledo?
I'll try to, I mean, address it. You know, the designation of a location, other than that location. So I think what the intent of the committee was trying to do was, if somewhere else is allowed to sell Indian via point of sale, either, instead of this one, that that voids the contract, that voids the sales tax incentive agreement, the second one, number two. The idea being, that's the incremental business that's being brought that we're investing in. So if that incremental business, the Indian sales, goes away, that would, the intent was that that voids it. I'm a little bit unclear on the motion that we're discussing in terms of the difference between having that location sell Indian and the proposal of having something related to if the brand goes away. I would appreciate clarity on that, because I thought we addressed that with the second point.
Well, as I interpret the, as I interpret the motion, it basically says if the Indian brand goes away, this incentive goes away. That's... Alderman Bram, is that fair?
Yeah, the, my understanding of bullet item number two, or the second one that's currently in the report, is if this dealership moves the brand elsewhere. My amendment, or motion to amend, is to say, they could, they don't have to move it if they terminate it, which it's a big difference. If they decide they no longer want to sell Indian period, so it's not about moving the brand, it's about termination of it, which, in a way, it's, one's a subset of the other, but they could just terminate it compared to moving it to another store in, let's just pick Addison or something. So that's how I differentiate bullet item two and my proposed amendment of bullet item number three, termination compared to movement of the Indian brand.
Either way, they're not selling it in Elmhurst anymore.
Correct.
That's what you're trying to get to, correct?
Correct.
As I interpret the, Alderman Bram's proposed amendment, it's kind of a further clarification of two, which is, they can move it, they can't move it. Okay, technically, they go out of business, they didn't move it, but it doesn't exist anymore. So therefore, this agreement shouldn't exist anymore. Fair summation, Alderman Bram?
Correct.
Okay. At least, that's the intent of the motion. Alderman York?
Thank you, Honors. So, the way I read the report, the final bullet point under the parameters, which is on page two, the last bullet point at the top, says amend the original sales tax agreement to set a sales tax base. That, in a way, protects something from going away, because you're basically raising the bar on what the level of the incentive agreement is, and let's just say they lose Indian, for whatever reason, it ceases to exist, or it moves, or whatever, then one would logically think that they would lose a big chunk of sales, so then the incremental amount would probably fall below the award amount, and therefore, you wouldn't be making incentive payments as you go along. And then, finally, to one other point, so I make that point, the second point I'd like to make is that the, both the sales tax incentive policy and the TIF incentive policy were specifically drafted to be used as guidelines for discussion. There's nothing in them that says that this is hard and fast, the rules, these are the guidelines for consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Hanquist?
So, based on this discussion, if Indian closes, based on the clarification, if I understood it correctly, the incentive then closes.
So what you mean, let me, just a clarification on your question. If the Indian brand in the United States ceases to exist, is that what you're saying?
That, I'm trying to interpret where we're trying to go here. If...
If Indian is no longer sold in Elmhurst for whatever reason...
Mm-hmm.
This incentive goes away.
Correct.
That's what the amendment, that's the way I understand the amendment. Alderman Bram?
Not exactly, Mr. Mayor. The paragraph before the bullet items say about payback. So if it goes away, they need to pay 100% back. So it's not about, they don't get the incentive anymore, it's about payback.
I was addressing just that one specific point to how you were doing it. Yes, you're right, the paragraph above it also talks about the payback. So yes, if they go away, the incentive goes away, and they're on the hook for the payback. Anybody who hasn't spoken on this yet, I'm getting a little lost here. Alderman Levin, maybe?
So do I.
I don't, I don't think I've spoken on this, but I can support that amendment. I think it's a clarification, and it seems like, I think this discussion is helpful, because when the city attorney goes to write it up, it would be helpful to know that this is what the ordinance is going to look like, or the agreement will look like. But I do think, yeah, dealership, Indian could go out of business, it's probably not going to happen, less likely. It's, a dealer can do something where they lose their franchise, which is sort of a middle step, and then the part that's contemplated is moving it. But as you just described it, any one of those would still require the beneficiary of this incentive to pay it back.
Okay.
And, oh, sorry. And I guess, to follow up on Alderman York's comment, I do agree, and this policy specifically says that the guidelines, they are guidelines, but I would hope that when staff meets with an applicant and we have a guideline, that there should be some discussion about what it was and why, from my perspective, or why we're not adhering to the guidelines. It's valid to, you know, to go off course a little bit, but I think we should know why.
Anyone else who hasn't had an opportunity to speak yet? All right, round two. Alderman Palmski?
Just a question for clarification. So the payback of the incentive, if the brand is no longer in existence, would really only apply for the first two years. Is that correct? Because that's when the payback is. And we're assuming that, oh, we're talking about the split would probably not hit that point, to Alderman York's point, because it wouldn't, it's likely the sales wouldn't reach that point. Is that correct?
Alderman Hanquist?
So I'm so confused. If the first two years, there's $100,000, so in their business model, they're going to be making this investment in the down season, basically, the winter, right? So the request for the $100,000 was to help with the million-dollar investment. So it's a 10% investment to help build out the dealership. After that is paid back, in the first couple of years, assuming the projections are correct, then it moves to a traditional sales incentive tax plan, which is 50-50 per year. And maybe this is a question for City Attorney Strino. At some point, if they're making, it's then a share of 50-50 of that sales tax going forward. To Alderman Bram's comments, if at some point in the tenure of this, they stop, the assumption here is, they've paid back the $100,000, and we've been, and a 50-50 share for the rest of the way, up to a total of $500,000. But since we're sharing in the sales tax, once we recover the $100,000, our investment is covered.
Right.
The rest of the risk is on the business at that point, and there is a share on an annual basis, which is usually done, I think, in January, or whenever we go back and assess sales taxes. At that point, then the share is paid out, right? So the real risk in this deal upfront, if I understand all of this, at least this is how I understood it upfront, is that $100,000, which we have a personal guarantee from the owner for. So I think our risk here is very low, and we're kind of confusing the issue. We're going to invest $100,000, they're going to sign a personal guarantee to cover that $100,000 if the business collapses. The city's not at risk of that money. After that, assuming everything goes well, which is the whole proposal here, we will get that $100,000 back out of sales tax revenue, and then we will go into a share over a period of time until we hit the limit of the $500,000. And then the agreement is over. So if that happens in three years, because they have a massive boon in sales, this agreement would end sooner, once we hit that $500,000 number. So I think we're concerned about the risk here. I don't think, through this discussion, that there is a lot of risk for the city or the taxpayer. It's an investment in this business, if we believe in that, this is laid out. Unless, of course, in the clawback, if I'm not understanding something here, and City Attorney Strino, I would assume in the clawback, if within the first two years, and I would assume this would be written legally, if they were not to pay back the $100,000, then we would go to the personal guarantee for that money, and then this agreement would end, assuming Indian, the relationship with Indian ended. Am I correct?
Yes.
I don't know if that helps to clarify this, but...
I think it answers Alderman Palmski's question, actually. Alderman Bram, you want to?
Yes, I think now I might be more confused. Well, one of the comments made in regards to the policy, yeah, policy is typically a guideline, but when there's strong language in a policy that says it must also be met, to the following criteria must also be met, that's not a guideline. That's strong English language that says it has to apply. Guidelines say it may be met, right? This says it must be met. So I would disagree in regards to, the guideline is just a guideline, and everything in it is just for us to think about. When there's strong language in the guideline, it's saying that it must be met, and that's what it's specifically stating for a specific reason. Otherwise, the terminology would have been different. In regards to the incentive, and now I'm a little bit confused, the total package here, I think, is a total of $100,000, or $500,000. $100,000 upfront, and additional $400,000 in sales tax incentive. 100,000 upfront, and additional 400,000 dollars in sales tax incentives. Is that correct?
Say it again, Alderman Bram?
100,000 dollars proposed upfront, and then 400,000 over the course of the, what is now 12 years, um, duration, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My only concern is, i- it seems to be a small hole here. And I'm just trying to do belt and suspenders here with my motion to amend, to, if the Indian dealership says, "I Motorsports, I'm sorry, you guys aren't performing to the way we want. We're yanking your brand, we're yanking the Indian brand away from you." I wanna make sure that we're getting that 100% payback as that paragraph that precedes the bullet points states with the other two bullet points. I didn't know anything of a personal guarantee, maybe I missed that. Um, I, I, I look for that to be, I guess, stipulated in the ordinance itself. But I, I think the amendment, to me at least, is an easy decision to move forward with it. Because it's belt and suspenders, another use case that could happen, that we wanna ensure that we get 100% payback.
Mr. Mayor, the committee's in agreement with that.
Okay.
Move forward.
I, I have a question, based, if I may?
Yeah.
All right. So, now that you clarified your point, we're not concerned about the 100,000, doesn't really matter. Whatever happens, if the place burns down, will get paid back.
This is quite an enlightening conversation. We wish this gentleman all the success.
Yes.
Okay, let's, you know, let's, maybe we start every comment with that.
Well, it's, I, you're talking, that's the protecting the city issue. I'm not concerned about that, but I, now I wanna make sure I understand that if, for some reason, Indian motorcycles aren't sold there, does the tax incentive, the 50/50 split end, or does it continue to go on the other brands? Because I thought I understood it, I've heard it two different ways. One is that, well, we're not gonna share taxing work, because Indian's gone. And the other one is, well, we're still gonna do the incentive on the other brands.
So the, the question is, um, is it based only on incremental sales? Or is it based on incremental sales that are Indian? That's your question.
Exactly.
You have an answer?
Go ahead.
Alderman Toledo?
Thank you. It's, the reason why staff gave the answer about, um, you know, is this incentive tied to Indian brand sales? And the answer is no. Because a, when sales tax receipts are reported to the state, just like with the Hyundai dealership, or any of our other car dealerships, they can't separate one brand of sales from another brand of sales. It all comes through for that business entity, as total sales for that business entity. Now, so I think that may have been confusing, in terms of your question on, is this agreement related to just Indian brand? The answer technically is no, because of what I just explained. But in practice, the answer is yes, because of how we set this up. Because we've established a new base for them. So the existing, the original sales tax agreement will still, we have a way to identify, based on the projections of the existing sales at that point of sale, keep that with sales tax incentive one. And then the incrementality of the sales will be related and assumed to be Indian brand. Because that's the material, new point of sale and new business that's being sold there. I hope that that clarified.
It does, but I think we've kind of sliced a nuance that we've never discussed before here. Which is, we've always given a report based on a new nameplate, and even a, a contract based on that. But in terms of our ability to actually track that, we can't by nameplate. It has to be by sales tax, by the holding company. So, the question then is, for this council, is, is it the intent, if the nameplate goes away, to terminate this agreement? Or consider it a breach of this agreement? That's what the question is. Alderman Levin?
Yes, and to follow up, I thank you for that. But if the brand goes out of business, then you can absolutely track how many sales are related to Indian.
Sure.
And so that's why I think we're talking about something that's never been resolved yet, which is just that question. If they go out of business, does the agreement go away on, that's what I was asking, on the rest of the incentive? Or does it just continue because they've made an investment?
Well, I think according to this motion, it goes, it's directly tied to it, it goes away.
They agreed to the amendment.
Alderman Toledo?
Thank you. I, I don't know, I won't speak on behalf of my colleagues, but my intent, when we were discussing this, and what I, I'm happy to support the motion, if it, if the council feels that it further clarifies bullet point number two that we're discussing. I, I believe, and it was my intent, that bullet point two already addresses that. But if we need further clarification, so that it's clearer when the ordinance is written, I can support that.
Okay. So it's kind of a belt and suspenders thing, I'm chatting with the city attorney as well. I think, if Indian goes away, then the, the agreement, even though it's incremental sales, is tied to the brand. And it goes away. Or it's considered, I, you know, I don't wanna get flipped with my terminology. Technically, it's a fundamental breach. Any other comments? Right now, we're actually voting, uh, we're actually discussing Alderman Bram's motion to add that third bullet point. Alderman Bram?
Yeah, just in, on that same line of thought, I think it is tied to Indian for, even though you can't calculate it from an accounting perspective, it is tied to Indian, because these developments are tied to Indian brand. And even if the Indian nameplate doesn't, does or does not go away, those improvements stay with I Motorsports. So, I see this coinciding with the base of 2016 sales, and being incremental to that. Because they're doing the, the improvements to be able to support the Indian nameplate. Um, but even if it goes away, the, I believe the 100% payback is still in place because of the fact that those developments aren't gonna magically be reverted, and they're gonna make the business smaller once again.
Alderman Mulliner?
Okay. We're dealing with, um, one of the things we gotta do is take a step back for a second, okay? We're dealing with a local business, we're not dealing with Indian, okay? So we gotta take that step back and think about this for a minute. We're not dealing with the Indian company itself directly. We're dealing with somebody who's trying to open up an Indian dealership here. If we turn around and tell this gentleman, when we're trying to incent him to open up an Indian dealership, and try to assist him in opening this, if we tell him that in 10 years, if Indian folds, or in eight years of Indian folds, you have to pay back all the incentive that we have tried to assist you with. Because Indian folded, when it's not his responsibility to keep Indian going. It's his responsibility to keep his brand in town going the best he can. It makes it very difficult for him to come forward and say, "I'm willing to sign onto an agreement that says this." As we've done every other agreement that we've done, we've never gone around and said, "Well, if Ford dealer, if Ford closes, if we did a, a deal with them, if the Ford brand goes away, we're gonna take away, we're gonna ask you for all your money back from the incentive." If the dealership closes, the dealership closes. You know, and it's pretty difficult to get the money back. So we've gotta take, we gotta take these things and look at them, and make sure we're looking at the right issue here. And what we're looking at is a local dealership. We're not looking at the internet, the national brand of Indian, and whether or not it's gonna stay in business or not. We're trying to do everything we can to help this person bring in a brand that's a good brand. But at the same time, we can't expect him to, on his own, make sure Indian stays in business. We're assuming, because it's a good brand, and it's a growing brand, that it's gonna stay in business. But let's be careful that we don't trip over ourselves to be looking at a national brand, and say, "We're gonna pull back money because of the national brand." Uh, we have to do everything to protect the dollars we're giving away, there's no question about that. But our responsibility, if we're really looking at what we're trying to do to grow a business in town, is to look at that individual who's local, not the international brand, or the brand that's national. He has no control over that national brand. He's gonna do everything he can. He's not spending money so that he can't stay in town. He's trying to do everything he can to stay in town and to build this business in town. And we're trying to help him to do that, but he's not gonna be out there trying to shoot himself in the foot and close the Indian brand.
Alderman Hunt.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request to bring this back to committee. A second. Make a motion?
Um-
Make a motion.
That is my request.
As a courtesy, we've always allowed, uh, chairman to pull their reports back to committee if they wanted, without a motion. So if that's your desire, and your colleagues?
It's our desire.
All right, we're gonna allow chairman to pull this back to committee. Hold on a second, I may have given you something I didn't want to. Where's my, uh, other report? Sorry, all yours. Eight point two. So Agenda Item 8.1's been pulled back to committee, 8.2. Uh, this is a report out of DP&amp;Z, Clerk Spencer. I'd ask you to read the recommendation.
Therefore, the Development, Planning, and Zoning Committee recommends approval of the proposed amendments to the Elmhurst zoning ordinance as recommended in the Zoning and Planning Commission Report dated June 19, 2017, as further modified in this report. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Signed by Michael Hunt, Chairman Noel Toledo, Vice Chairman and Mark A. Mulliner.
Okay, to put this before council, I asked for a motion to approve the report and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Hunt, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hunt, you're very popular tonight. Your report.
Unfortunately. The, uh, the topic of zoning and the map, and updating the zoning, it was started a year ago by the city council, and was taken under both the commission, um, staff, and ultimately this committee over the past year. It was roughly 15 to 20 meetings held, after the commission came forward with a recommendation. There were downtown focus groups, uh, there was, uh, a community workshop, there was community outreach through websites. Summer through fall, we went through a variety of other ordinance and map to determine weak, problematic, and outdated components. And then, beginning this year, we went through an open house to present the draft to the community. On, in February, we had a public hearing on this draft. In April, the commission recommended with, to the city council to approve the plan. And then from there, uh, staff had a variety of other meetings with affected, uh, folks in the area. And finally, uh, it came back to, uh, to this commission. And we reviewed it over the last, uh, two committee meetings. Uh, we had good input, um, from staff, but as well from many of the aldermen, as well as the mayor. So, uh, what is before you tonight is, um, the result of that work. Most of it, um, that came to us on the committee, was agreed upon. There were several areas that we spent some additional time, but I would say that, that 95% of the work city staff did with the community, that the commission did, was agreed upon when it came to us, so it was in great shape. Um, for those that are familiar with our zoning code, it was kind of a chaotic-looking map when it, when we started this process. It's a very clean, organized map as we end this process. So I ask for your support, um, in what we're doing. I did wanna make a couple of, of points before I, I closed, which is, we had some questions on both, um, the plan development process, and on the uses. Um, both of those are scheduled after we get through updating, uh, the zoning code to address both plan development, and then the use cases, and update those accordingly, uh, to the new zoning. Uh, so, uh, we did agree, uh, moving forward, that this was, uh, an excellent plan as a committee, and had unanimous approval, and we ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just because of the nature and the, uh, I think the importance of this, I wanted to make a couple of comments. And I wanted to thank a number of people involved, or everybody involved in the process, starting with residents, um, who were actively engaged in the process throughout the past year. City staff, the Zoning and Planning Commission, as well as the council. This has been a topic that has been ongoing for a long time, as Alderman Hunt mentioned. And I, I think that we're at a really great place. We've accomplished the objectives that the city council requested. Um, I know I'm new to this committee, so I al, also thank the outgoing committee member as well for his work on this throughout the process. I think we're in a really good place. I think it simplifies our zoning downtown for developers, who might be looking at where we're at, maybe had passed on an opportunity, because it looked maybe a little bit too complicated, or needed too many variances, it was gonna be too expensive. So this also, I think, helps clean it up, and that was one of the intents of the council when this whole process started. So, I do thank everybody for that, um, and I look forward to a lively conversation. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments on the zoning? Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. As a community, we should be proud of the process that was undertaken to get the proposal to where it is now. Residents actively participated in both the creation of the downtown plan and the rezoning process. Staff paid close attention to the input provided, and in many cases, revised the zoning proposal accordingly. I want to thank staff for their responsiveness to residents and the elected officials. This downtown rezoning proposal is packed with many thoughtful, visionary changes that will greatly benefit our community. A number of the proposed changes were made with the intention to streamline and attract development. This is a worthwhile goal, and surely every developer would like to see a faster, less restrictive development environment. My concern is that, as proposed, we don't have the tools we need to ensure that all major developments are beneficial to the community. I'm not opposed to taller buildings. I think Elmhurst 255 demonstrates that six-story developments can be designed in a way to enhance our downtown. The towers of that project are set back, the Addison side matches the scale of the townhomes to the south, high-quality building materials were used, and architectural details were incorporated. I would argue that these features were included because of the city's involvement. The proposed zoning changes do not incentivize developers to include these types of features. A developer who proposes a major development expects to work with the municipality and community to obtain necessary approvals. Some communities, like La Grange, require essentially every major development to go through the plan development process. Further, every plan development in La Grange provides compensating amenities, such as plazas, pedestrian walkways, increased landscaping, or underground parking. In the spectrum of influencing development, azarite development is on one end, and municipal land acquisition is on the other. Effective tools exist in the middle, and the plan development process can be, can be one of them. I know, as, um, we've heard mentioned, that staff has begun conversation to update our plan development process. And I'm hopeful that we can create, use that process, um, and create a, a process that facilitates development and ensures that major new developments are assets to our community. Either because of the quality of the architecture, or the public amenities that accompany it. If tonight, we were considering a plan development process like La Grange's, in addition to the rezoning proposal, I would be in a position to support both. However, I can't support the zoning changes as a standalone proposal.
Any other comments? Alderman Polanski?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the proposed zoning changes, I believe are a reflection of the interest of our residents, framed by the work of staff, the commission, and development planning and zoning, and all the, the council. I wanna thank everyone who worked on this for their ongoing attention to detail and willingness to listen. I also want to recognize and commend the many residents who participated to share opinions and suggestions. Their exemplary engagement will make these zoning changes a better fit for our community than what exists today. One resident told me that she believed that she and her neighbors had genuinely been heard. So I wanna thank everybody who has worked on this.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Levin?
The, the committee did a good job, and I know they were, in addressing the many concerns that came up in the last few weeks, and the residents that I had heard from all feel like they got heard and are satisfied on those issues, so, thank you for that. And, Mr. Chairman, uh, you talked about the, sort of the two-phase approach. So if we go with the zoning, and then if there are issues where we might have questions about specific uses that are proposed to be conditional or permitted, would there be an opportunity to address those again later? those again later?
Alderman Honquist?
Uh, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
No.
Dunn, absent. Leader.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, three nays, and one absent.
Eleven ayes, three nays, motion carries.
No, 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 no. Eleven, wait, eleven ayes.
Two nays.
Two nays. One absent.
Eleven ayes, two nays.
Aye.
Motion carries. Where am I? Eight point two, agenda item eight point two, report out of D.P. and Z. Is approved. Okay? Uh, on to, uh, reports and recommendations of, uh, appointed or elected officials. Mayor Morley, that's me. I have a couple of them. One is that the city, um, and the credit goes to staff, uh, the city has received the distinguished budget presentation award for their current budget. I think that's seventeen or eighteen years in a row. Alderman York, does that sound about right? Maybe more?
That one's a little lower. It's the, um, GFOA.
Was the other one?
Yeah, it's the other one. This one's like ten, about ten years. It's still outstanding.
We'll get there then, is what you're saying.
Yep. We're on the, we're on the road.
I wanna, uh, uh, thank staff and the finance department, um, and the finance committee for all their hard work, um, in, uh, in what, in everything they do in putting together our budget. Uh, only other report really for me is, um, what's going on in Springfield. I think most folks are aware. Uh, not only did, uh, was there an income tax increase, um, but recently there was a budget that was passed, and, uh, there are two items in there that are gonna affect, uh, the residents in the city of Elmhurst. One is that, um, Springfield has determined that they now wanna charge us an administrative fee, uh, on all of our home rule sales tax. So they are obviously involved in the process. Um, they now want to charge a two percent administrative fee on all of our home rule sales tax. That means about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, that we're currently collecting will go to them at the stroke of a pen. No increased work by them or anything else. They're just taking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And from what I've seen in Springfield, uh, it's in perpetuity. I've never seen him, uh, give anything up. The other thing that, uh, is kinda funky, and we're waiting to see how this, um, ends up, is we have a local government distributive fund. That's, uh, a dollar amount that is assigned to every resident of Elmhurst. Uh, it's a dollar amount that's determined and then sent back to the city of Elmhurst. Uh, it's usually between ninety and a hundred dollars per person in the city of Elmhurst. So, if you do the math, and it's a hundred dollars per head in Elmhurst, and that's everybody who's ninety years old down to nine days old, it's every resident, we get about four point four million dollars. Sometimes it's ninety-three, ninety-four, so maybe it's four point two million dollars. Well, the current budget calls for that number to be reduced by ten percent. So that means it's a four hundred thousand dollar hole, four hundred and forty thousand dollar hole. However, our friends in Springfield have come up with a accounting trick that they're very proud of. We usually took us ninety days to get our LGDF payment. Now they're gonna pay us monthly, and they're gonna pay us every thirty days. So in the next fiscal year, they're telling us they're gonna pay us fourteen times instead of twelve times. And even though they're giving us ten percent less, they're giving us two extra payments. Does that make sense to anybody here? Okay. So, yeah. And that's the other thing, goes to what I said before, which is Springfield never gives something up after they take it. So, even if they play this one-time-only shenanigans with, uh, the payment of this LGDF fund, I firmly believe that this ten percent and even more will be going away in years to come. So, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars because they want to add an administrative fee, and four hundred and forty thousand dollars. If it doesn't come out next year because of their shenanigans, it's gonna come out the following year and every year thereafter. So, um, I know staff is aware of this. Um, we told staff two years ago, when they started threatening to cut the LGDF, to start coming up with some plans. I think, uh, finance committee is gonna be taking up this concern and, um, so that's my report. I think, uh, people need to understand, not only is Springfield hitting every resident personally in their, uh, on their tax return, they're now limiting the funds that come to us. In theory, it may cause us, if we didn't have a balanced budget and didn't have reserves, it may cause us to turn around, hit the taxpayer a second time. So I'm appalled by what's going on in Springfield, but that's a story. City manager?
Thank you. I have a, a few things. First, uh, the police roll calls this week. Uh, each of them start at six o'clock on Tuesday and Thursday. Tuesday is on Walnut between Emery and Ida, and Thursday is on Marion between Fair Lane and Elm Tree Lane. I encourage everyone to, to go out to those and say hello to our, uh, officers that, uh, that come in for the, uh, the roll calls. Um, second item tomorrow night, later tomorrow night after the roll call, uh, Clark mosquito will be, uh, Clark Control will be spraying for mosquitoes tomorrow night. We're sending that message out to everybody that we can in the, uh, city so that everybody's aware that that will be happening. Um, and then two, two last items, uh, certainly the aldermen in the sixth and seventh wards know this, but a lot of people have probably driven past and wondered what was going on. And that's a project on Madison Street. That's a, it's actually a Nycor, um, project where they're moving a twenty-inch gas main. It's a very significant main that runs through the city. Uh, it was discovered last year when we were repaving the street that it's much too shallow. Uh, we thought that construction was gonna start this week. I guess it actually has on the west side by, by digging an exploratory pit. Uh, we got word today from Nycor and their contractor that there may be some changes to the project. Uh, they may split it up, they may delay it, they, uh, they're not sure right now. We're meeting with them tomorrow. We've set a, an emergency meeting with them to find out what's going on exactly so that we can have a better idea. Once we know, we'll be sure to get that out to everybody. Uh, but if, if anybody not here is wondering what that project is, that's a Nycor project, uh, down that street. And then the last item that I have, and since Alderman Dunn's not here to let everybody know, I, I wanna do that, uh, this is the last week of phase two runway rotation test. Uh, the next one will start next week, uh, excuse me, on July 23rd, it will be the phase three, um, runway rotation test. And I would strongly encourage everyone to use the survey that's, that we've linked to from the website, uh, if there are issues with low-flying airplanes, uh, in the area. That is the data that is gonna be taken into consideration when the FAA and the ONCC evaluate this. So strongly encourage any residents who, uh, have complaints about low-flying aircraft to go on our website and, uh, take that survey. Um, that's all I have.
Any other reports? Seeing none, we'll go on to ordinances. Ten point one, Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the ordinance.
An ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the issuance of a contingent notice of a ward for conversion of fourteen city-owned vehicles to propane.
Okay, to put, to put this ordinance before council, I'll ask for a motion, uh, to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy?
Uh, no comments, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions or comments? Clerk Spencer.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Leader.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. On to ten point two. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the ordinance.
An ordinance providing for the issuance of approximately, oh, I'm, you want me to read this other one? Here. I'm sorry, I got an updated.
Oh.
Version from Chairman York. Okay. An ordinance providing for the issuance of nine million, six hundred fifteen thousand dollars general obligation bonds, series 2017B of the city of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of replacing said city's water meters, making improvements to said city's wastewater treatment plant, and paying the expenses incident thereto, providing for the levy and collection of direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the winning bidder thereof.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman York?
Uh, thank you, your honor. So, again, another, um, good, another day of good news with regards to, um, financing long-term operations for the city. Um, we, uh, went to the market today and received forty bids on our bonds from seven, so from seven bidders. And the successful bid came in around two point, just a shade over two point six percent. In just a moment, I'm gonna ask to, um, suspend the rules so Mark Jarantina from our, uh, bond advisory service can bring us up to date on the facts and figures. But, um, what I did wanna, um, mention is that, um, as Clerk Spencer read, the proceeds from this bond are being utilized for improvements to, um, the, um, water treatment system and the installation of water meters, which is water distribution. Um, those are both, uh, functions of the municipal utility fund, which, um, despite what you read about the bond ordinance, which is required, um, about the levying and whatnot, we actually, um, collect the monies that we use to pay the debt service through user fees, through the, um, uh, the capital investment recovery charge in our, um, water and sewage rates. So, the reason we do this is because we can go, um, and obtain better, um, interest rates in a general obligation issue than we can in a revenue bond issue. So we do this, um, so that we, um, do better for the, for the citizens and the users of, uh, of the services here in the city of Elmhurst. So, with all that being said, I'd like to, um, ask that we suspend the rules to allow Mark Jarantina to provide the, um, council and the audience with all the gory details of the successful bonds, bond sale today.
Okay, motion to suspend and allow Mr. Jarantina opportunity to talk. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Floor is yours, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening. Uh, as Alderman York said, bids were taken this morning for the city's general obligation bonds, series 2017B, and there were forty bids received from seven different bidders. The winning bid ended up being Meserel Financial out of New York with a two point six percent over fifteen years. The bonds were used, like Alderman York said, to finance the city's water meters and to make improvements to the wastewater treatment facility of the city. Along with this bond issue, S&amp;P also affirmed the city's triple-A bond rating, which is the highest possible bond rating you can get, and this definitely helped with the low interest cost of the bond issue. We therefore recommend that the best bid be accepted by Meserel Financial at an interest rate of two point six percent. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Any questions? I have a question. Uh, how do you get forty bids from seven different bidders? Do they start bidding down, or do they slice up the, uh?
Rebid.
The amount?
So if you get...
So they rebid, so they bid themselves down?
Yes. So, and they, they know what place they're in. If they're in second or third place, they can rebid, and then, so, kinda like eBay.
Hey, if we can get to two point six, I think that's fantastic. Okay, any other questions? All right, sir, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, any other comments as it relates to the motion before us, which is, uh, O-51-2017 regarding the issuance of these bonds? Clerk Spencer.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn is absent. Leader.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. On to agenda item ten point three. Clerk Spencer, another ordinance, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving a parking lot lease with Emmanuel Lutheran Church.
Okay. Uh, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Bram. Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No further comments.
Any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Leader.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. On to, uh, agenda item eleven, other business. Any other business? Alderman Honquist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to share a story. I, uh, a week ago, Saturday, uh, was invited to a block party on Washington Street to celebrate, uh, all the stormwater improvements that have gone over there. And I just wanted to share every, with everyone how thankful and happy, uh, all those folks are that we stepped up. We were reminded again this week of how weather, uh, in our area can change and can be very treacherous and dangerous. Um, and I guess if you live along a river or a creek or a lake, you can expect, maybe if you have a big storm, that can happen to you. Probably not so much when you live in the middle of a, of a landlocked city, uh, like ours is. Um, but as we know in the past, it's happened to, to many of our residents. So, I just wanted to share, um, what they shared with me, which was, uh, a very genuine thank you and appreciation for everyone, past and present, on the city council that supported, uh, stormwater improvements and, obviously, uh, working with the other government entities, as we did in this case in Madison, uh, to make that not only a stormwater, but also a beautiful, if anyone hasn't seen it, uh, it's almost a work of art. So I give, uh, staff a lot of credit, and they've done excellent work. Uh, thank you. Thank you, Howard. And, uh, for the rest of us, I just wanted to, to share that news with you.
Alderman York?
Uh, thank you, your honor. So just to follow up on your comments about the budget discussion, I did meet with, uh, the city manager and the finance director, and, um, I wholeheartedly agree with, um, your concerns with the budget. The other thing that I find particularly appalling as well is, um, that the city does receive a share of the, uh, of the income tax. And that income tax has been going down, um, uh, a little bit over the past, uh, few months. But the thing that, um, really is terrible about it is the fact that they increased the, um, income tax levels, and yet, um, the state is not going to share any of the incremental, um, uh, income tax with the municipality. So, uh, we don't know what that could be, but, um, obviously it would be a sizable amount of money. So, with that being said, um, this committee will be looking at the impacts of the Illinois budget at our next committee meeting, um, in August, I guess, or, or next, next week.
Next Monday.
Next week, yep. So...
Any other business? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Honquist. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.